Okay, now we're ready to start. The call is meeting, this February meeting of the Linden Board of Education order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On February 3rd, 2015, notice was sent to the home news tribune, star center, the local source, and clerk of the municipality. By standing orders, no smoking in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law.
Roll call.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mrs. Hudak?
Here.
Mr. Colivas?
Here.
Mrs. Orman?
Here.
Mr. Strazella?
Here.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mrs. Beviana?
Present.
Mr. Russell.
He's absent. Excused. Okay, approval, most of you approve the minutes of the work session and regular meeting for Monday, February 2nd?
I make that motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Abstain.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Abstain.
Okay, comments from the public on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Tonight, I'd like to start off by giving our monthly HIV report. Last month, we had 16 incidents reported in the district. Three of those were validated as being true HIV incidents. Nine were not, and four were undetermined. The consequences for the HIV incidents were warnings, power notification, in-school suspension, and monitoring. The victims in all instances were counseled. On February 17th, the district utilized our second snow day. We did have four snow days built into the calendar, so we have two left in case of further inclement weather. Thinking we're going to be okay, I can't believe that next week is March already, but we have had some storms in March before, so we're not out of the woods yet. I'd like to also remind the Board and our parents that roundup for pre-K and kindergarten begins on March 9th through March 12th. Specific dates and times are on our district websites. Also, for the first time for our elementary parents, when we do parent-teacher conferences this spring, we will have night conferences. The opportunities for that, that was, it took a while, it's something that I know this Board has wanted for a long time, but through negotiations and through the contract that was recently ratified, we will have that, so that's a wonderful thing. On February 10th, we held our fourth district-wide strategic planning committee meeting. If you remember, the goal of these meetings is to create a long-term, five-year plan for our district to move it forward, to see where we're going, and we anticipate that we will have our plan complete to be presented to the Board at the May meeting. And tonight, we have some very special guests with us, with their very nice shirts on. The Linden High School bowling team, who's having an outstanding season, so I'm just gonna step down and introduce them. Mr. Tapaleski, can I have a Board member to join me?
Mr. Colivas, would you please go down?
Absolutely.
I'm gonna just say a few words about our outstanding bowlers, our outstanding young people, then I'm gonna ask their coach to come up and say a few words, and then we have some nice certificates for our students. Students, when you're called up, if you would please shake Mr. Colivas's hand, I'll give you a certificate, and then stand in front of the stage so we could take a group picture. Our bowling team has had an outstanding season this winter. It's not over yet, correct, Coach? Two more matches, I believe, but the Tigers won the Union County Tournament on February 4th. That's a big accomplishment. Alexis Dulco rolled a 703 series. It would take me at least 10 games to roll 703 pins, I think. 10 games, I might make 703. Alexis had a high game of 289 to lead the Tigers to first place. James Fostinos had a 653 for Linden, Brandon Peters a 641, Michelle Dekowski 628, Derek McGee 544 also contributed to the victory. In the state tournament, our team placed second in the Group Four North Jersey Section Two Tournament, which is also a tremendous accomplishment, and we qualified for the Group Four Tournament where we finished in eighth place. We're also currently in first place in the Wa Chung Division of the Union Conference with a 9-1 record. We have two matches remaining, Coach. Will we win those final two?
We better.
Yeah, I'm sure we will. I'm very confident. The team also set a new Linden High School record for an individual game with an amazing 1,168 pin total against Plainfield. That's pretty impressive. They've been in the top 20 in the entire state all year with a ranking as high as number That's pretty impressive. I know we, sometimes we're, people around here focus on football and basketball and things like that, but how about them bowlers?
How about them bowlers?
I'd like to just review some of the other individual honors that our Tigers garnered this year. Alexis Dulco and Michelle Dekowski finished second and sixth respectively in the Union County Girls Individual Tournament. Michelle Dekowski and Sanota Cook were among 40 girls statewide that qualified for the NJ SIAA Girls Individual Tournament, and Sanota finished 11th in the entire state. James Fostinos and Brandon Peters finished in 10th and 13th place in the Union County Boys Individual Tournament. And some other outstanding individual achievements during the season were turned in by several bowlers. Michelle Dekowski rolled a 769 series with games of 278 and 275 respectively. Derek McGee had a 749 series that featured a game of 278 against Roswell Catholic. What else can I say but congratulations to the Linden High School bowling team on a super, super amazing season. I'd like to recognize your coach with a certificate, Coach Pazano.
Coach Pazano.
Thank you. And Coach, I'm gonna ask you to call up your players. Shave my hand, shake Mr. Colivas's hand, give him a certificate, and we'll take a picture.
You got it.
Mr. Walters, could you take the picture, sir?
Okay, Brandon Peters. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Derek McGee.
I gotta get a shirt. I gotta get a shirt.
Congratulations.
George Galldes.
Congratulations, George.
James Fostinos.
Congratulations.
Alexis Dulco.
Congratulations, George.
Sanota Cook.
I'm gonna slip down some bowler.
Congratulations, Sanota. Thanks. And Michelle Dekowski.
Congratulations.
Okay, you got it.
I think she qualified for the junior team, the national team, something like that.
I think she qualified.
But that's, yeah, now I'd be lucky, now.
I can't even, I have trouble getting the 100.
Charles, the 100 bumpers.
She got closer.
I like that shirt better.
Oh, they're hot. I like those, they're really cool, yeah.
No, you're not even...
I'm good.
It's the first thing I've ever walked up to.
I like your shirt.
It's like you can't, I had a look to see what you were wearing.
We need another one.
Mr. Vice President, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Attorney's Report?
Nothing.
No report at this time, okay. Reports Standing Committee, Curriculum and Instruction, Mrs. Beviano.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent, present the following 33 items to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item 1 through 4 approve the approval and termination of out-of-district placements, the adjustment of tuition, and the payment for related services as per the child study team evaluations. Item 5 amends action on past agenda items. Item 6 accepts the elementary, middle, and high school course description guides for 2015, 2016. Item 7 and 8 grant permissions for use of facilities and school activities. Item 9 approve district field trips. 10 and 13 approve training for district staff. 11 approves a tutoring program at School 4 for Title I students. Item 12 retroactively approve staff as presenters for the District Professional Development Day. Item 13 grants permission for delayed start times at Linden High School during park testing. Item 15 authorizes curriculum writing. 16 approves the secondary school grading policy. Item 17 grants permission for district schools and organizations to participate in the Link's Walk-a-Thon. Item 19 and 20 retroactively approve a delayed opening, early dismissal, and closing of schools due to inclement weather. Item 21 through 23 grant approval for Linden School Districts to complete the graduate coursework through internships and research in the Linden Public Schools. 24 grants permission to apply for the continuation of the 21st Century Community Learning Grant for 2015, 2016 school year. 25 approves the establishment of Television and Broadcasting Club at Linden High School. 26 grants approval to submit the Innovative New Jersey Grant to the New Jersey Department of Education. 27 approves the cost of refreshments for the McManus Middle School Restaurant Internationale participants to be paid for by Title III funds. Item 28 approves the expenditure of Confucius Classroom Funds to be used for the Linden High School Exchange Visit to Xiamen Foreign Language School. Item 29 grants approval for 21 high school students to participate in the Spanish Exchange Program to the Alfonso Exel Sabayo High School in Murcia, Spain. Item 30 grants approval to establish High School International Learn and Serve Project with the municipalities of Valles Cachada and Trevico, Italy. Item 31 approves a memorandum agreement between the Linden Public Schools and Kane University for students to earn college credit for the completion of select business courses. Item 32 proclaims the month of March as Women's History Month to be celebrated with events and activities in the Linden Public Schools. And item 33 approves the Superintendent's Determination and Actions, taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying discussed at the February 2nd, 2015 regular board meeting. Mr. President, I move Curriculum and Instruction Items 1 through 33 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
I vote yes on all and abstain on number 5, Megan Mohan.
Mr. Colivas?
I vote yes on all, abstain on number 5, and retroactive numbers 9, 14, and 18.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Management and Operations, Mrs. Hudak.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Management and Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following 15 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. The first is following two retirements to be accepted with regret. Dr. Robitose?
Thank you, Mrs. Hudak. Jaclyn Cassidy worked as a language arts teacher and then a literacy coach at, actually both of our middle schools in Linden for the past 15 years, and Monica Batella is a teacher at School 9, first grade teacher, who's worked for the Board of Ed for the past 16 years. Both of these employees have dedicated many years to our students. I want to thank them for their dedication and wish them all the best in their retirement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Robitose. Number 2 is Amendment of Passport Action. Number 3, our resignation. Numbers 4, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 are appointments. Number 5 is to approve the transfer of the following staff listed. Number 6 is leave of absence. Number 7 is compensate staff listed for unused sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Number 8 is to approve the recommendation of the Superintendent to suspend the employee listed with pay effective February 5th, 2015, until further investigation administrative action occurs. Number 9 is to approve the termination of an employee listed effective January 5th, 2015, for excessive absenteeism from the enterprise funding. Number 10 is to approve the following staff designated from each elementary school, secretary, nurse, and social worker/teacher and part-time aides to work pre-K and kindergarten roundup on the evening of Thursday, March 12th, 2015, at their contractual rate. That's it. Mr. Vice President, I move Items 1 through 15 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Management and Operations, Mrs. Hudak.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Management and Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following 15 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. The first is following two retirements to be accepted with regret. Dr. Robitose?
Thank you, Mrs. Hudak. Jaclyn Cassidy worked as a language arts teacher and then a literacy coach at, actually both of our middle schools in Linden for the past 15 years, and Monica Batella is a teacher at School 9, first grade teacher, who's worked for the Board of Ed for the past 16 years. Both of these employees have dedicated many years to our students. I want to thank them for their dedication and wish them all the best in their retirement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Robitose. Number 2 is Amendment of Passport Action. Number 3, our resignation. Numbers 4, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 are appointments. Number 5 is to approve the transfer of the following staff listed. Number 6 is leave of absence. Number 7 is compensate staff listed for unused sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Number 8 is to approve the recommendation of the Superintendent to suspend the employee listed with pay effective February 5th, 2015, until further investigation administrative action occurs. Number 9 is to approve the termination of an employee listed effective January 5th, 2015, for excessive absenteeism from the enterprise funding. Number 10 is to approve the following staff designated from each elementary school, secretary, nurse, and social worker/teacher and part-time aides to work pre-K and kindergarten roundup on the evening of Thursday, March 12th, 2015, at their contractual rate. That's it. Mr. Vice President, I move Items 1 through 15 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Support Operations. Support Operations Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Business Administrative Board Secretary, presents the following 19 finance motions and five facility motions to the Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 6 are regular board business dealing with the acceptance of Business Administrator Board Secretary certifications as of January 31st, 2015. Board Secretary's monthly financial report, the appropriations section, and upon consultation with the appropriate district officials certifies that, to the best of our knowledge, no major accounts or fund have been over expended in violation of NJAC 6A:23-2.11A, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of this fiscal year. Secretary's report for the month of January 2015, authorization for payment of salaries and supplemental payroll for February 2015, withdrawal warrants in the amount specified in favor of person's name, and a list of transfers and adjustments for the month of January 2015, and attached to the list of transfers and adjustments for the month of January. Item 7 is Treasury Report for the month of January. Item 8 is to amend Board actions on past operations report finance from May and February. Items 9 through 13 are to accept funds in the amount of $13,126 from Union County College Cranford for Adult Basic Skills, grant from Target Take Charge Education Program for various schools, $20 from the State of New Jersey Probation Administration representing student restitution, a donation of Science Screen Report for students K through 8 from Infineum USA, Linden, New Jersey, and eight sets of luggage from Jersey Travel Edison, New Jersey for the Linden High School Confucius Classroom. Items 14 through 17 are to approve payment to St. Elizabeth Hungary Linden for utility costs as per contract executed in July of 2014, a lease agreement with Rakin Agency Linden for the rental of 3,066 square feet of office space located at 350 West St. George Avenue for the use of the Linden Science Program. A contract will be for a period of five years and a fee not to exceed $70,000 per year, pending attorney review. The enrollment of the following students for the 2015-16 school year eligible on a tuition basis under District Policy 5118. Pending enrollment figures, authorization to the District Administrative Board Secretary to submit the 2015-16 tentative annual school budget to the Executive County Superintendent following receipt of aid, state aid figures, which I believe is supposed to occur sometime this week or is it next week?
I'm sorry?
The state figures?
This week.
This week?
Probably Thursday.
Item 18 is to declare the following as surplus equipment obsolete and/or unusable to be disposed of according with District Policy 3260. Item 19 is a student activities report for January 2015. Facilities, items 1 through 5 are use of facilities in no charge as requested by Elena Hori, Principal of Linden High School, A Perkins, Principal of School 6, P Saldana, Linden Youth Soccer Association, and approved by Mrs. Yosenko, Athletic Director, R Davis, Coach at Linden PAL, and I believe it's Barbara Greco, Brady, Linden Culture and Heritage Committee, and Mystic Vision Players. If there are no questions or further discussions, I move Items 1 through 19 of finance agenda and 1 through 5 of facilities for approval and respectfully seek a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Here we go. Planning and Policy, Mrs. Orman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Policy Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, submits one policy for second reading to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate on local district policies. We have Policy 4150/4250, which is the family leave and medical leave. It's a new policy that outlines the district and the employees' rights and responsibilities under the law. I submit that policy for second reading and oblige for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mr. Vice President, before you go on, if I could mention, I meant to mention it earlier, but due to the timing of the budget stuff this year, we're probably gonna need a special meeting. We're hoping that we can do it on our committee night since most of you have that on your calendar anyway, on March 19th. We'll probably do it for 6. We'll send out further details, but just the way the timing's working out with the budget when we're finding out our state aid...
I believe the governor's speech is tomorrow, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Governor's speech is tomorrow, then we'll probably get the figures Thursday. Then there's, then what happens after that, as you know from years past, that there's a quick turnaround in what we have to submit, but the purpose of the meeting on the 19th, Ms. Gaylord, would be?
For the budget, for the tentative budget to be approved, to be submitted to the county. We have until March 20th this year because we have no vote on the budget, so we have until then to submit it.
Okay, thank you.
So if you could put that on your calendar, please. We'll send you more details.
Okay, reports of special committees. There is no report from the state delegate, county delegate, Mr. Strazella.
No report at this month.
Ed Services Commission, Mrs. Orman.
Just briefly, we had our monthly meeting, pretty much just your basic agenda items removed, but one thing that, well, two things happened. We had a presentation that dealt with the transitioning of older children into the actual workforce. As you know, the commission deals exclusively with children with special needs, whether it's learning, cognitive, or behaviorally challenged children, and their whole goal was to allow, or to help parents realize that their children can go into the workforce either by themselves with companies that will assist them, or even with coaches that can stay with them throughout their whole entire employment. And there was another program that they discussed where you can actually pay for your child to be part of a program where the classroom is literally inside of a business, so they're being taught and receiving credits on their yard, so it was very interesting. Naturally, me being interested because of the situation I'm in with my children. Also, the teachers and staff are still without a contract, so it was amazing to see almost every single last teacher and staff member come to that meeting dressed in red to show solidarity, asking for us to go ahead and ratify the contract. And if you look and see what they make for what they do, it was heartbreaking. So we're just, like I said, just hopefully we could just, you know, get their contract, you know, taken care of, because like I said, they're just nowhere near what other public schools are making, so. And that just concludes, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Orman. Negotiations, Mrs. Beviano.
No report.
Thank you. EST for students, there is no report at this time. There was a clerical mix-up in the scheduling of the last meeting, so we're gonna try and meet again in March. EST for special items, Mrs. Hudak.
No meeting yet.
Board members' comments and new business. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank all the board members that extended their well wishes to my wife. I appreciate everything, and she's doing well, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Ms. Orman.
I just want to take a few minutes to talk about a particular group of kids that seem to somehow get missed during the winter sports season. Our middle school basketball team had a phenomenal season this year. Their 6th, 7th, and 8th graders that play with all of their heart, with the hopes, I guess, to play for Coach Calicchio one day. They had an amazing season, 10 wins and one loss, they only lost to Union. They had somebody turn over in that game, but it was just really great to see, like I said, these young guys just out there playing. What was really wonderful about the whole process was to see how Coach McGlory allowed my son, who has special needs, to participate in the athletic program, how he managed to develop plays that Chase could actually do, naturally when they were like 30 points ahead of the other team, and even attempted to teach Chase how to play defense, because you know, defense wins games. So it was just really amazing. But what was more amazing were the parents that would come out to the games, who have taught their children good character. Those kids embraced Chase like so warmly, and I mean, touched my heart, but the parents were like so into it as well. So I wanted to also thank them because they're raising wonderful young men who are learning how to accept all children regardless of their differences and just bring them into the fold. So my hats off to Coach McGlory and his wonderful coaching, the way that he just, like I said, just had that team mesh, and his, like I said, his great coaching skills, and to the parents and to the students. Congratulations on a great job. I hope you're watching this on television, and hopefully, you know, we'll get to see you there, you know, acknowledge him.
Thank you, Mrs. Orman. Any other staff? Mrs. Strazella?
President, Dr. Robitose, would you like to comment on our Linden High School basketball team, how great they're doing?
Yes, our high school basketball team is doing, having a tremendous season this year. They're ranked number 6 in the state of New Jersey. They're the top, last I checked, the top public school in the state of New Jersey. We've won the first round of the Union County Tournament. We have another game Wednesday. If we win, we'll play Saturday night in the finals, and then the state tournament will begin. But more importantly than what they're doing on the court, Coach Calicchio has shared with me that this is one of the best group of young men he has ever coached because of their character, how they portray themselves in school, and how hard they work in the
I'd just like to say, Lisa, I have seen some of the other teams play. I did not get to see all of the winter sports play, but on my agenda for next year, I'd love to come out and see all of the, all of the sports that our district has to offer and, you know, enjoy seeing everyone. I'd also like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mrs. Batella on her retirement, wish her much happiness and relaxation in her new chapter of life, and she was a wonderful teacher at School 9, and she will definitely be missed.
Thank you.